United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go ahead and get started. We will do roll call. Lucas Curd.
Here.
Jeff Klein.
Here.
Sean Morrison.
Here.
Caleb Wasson.
Here.
George Bushes.
Here.
Megan Swain-Cooch is here. Dave Witt.
Here.
Okay, roll call. So we will do the first call to the public. Will there be a separate time to talk about solar like you did last month, Megan? Like when you got to solar on the agenda, you let us talk then. Is that what you want or no? Yeah, so you can do it now, and then there's a second call to the public at the end of the meeting. So if you want to wait until the end of the meeting, that's fine. No, I just, last month you did it during the solar. You said the first call to the public was for anything else, and then during... I'm just asking for clarification. Yeah, no, you can... Right now? Yeah, you can do solar now. I think we did, when we have like the public hearing or whatever, it was leaving public comment during the public hearing on the solar because that's what we were taking up a public hearing on. Similar to the swimming pool with the backyards, but for the most part, this is just a regular meeting. No problem. You have mail. And it's from me. So I just emailed you what I'm about to hand you. That's what that... Conway Township Commissioners, I would like to submit to the Planning Commission an edited version of the draft ordinance to regulate solar energy systems from what is included in your packet today. The people have taken the time to adjust the ordinance to include additional language that we feel will protect the health, safety, and general welfare of this community. We are requesting that this version is used for the town hall meeting as a starting point for discussion and further editing as necessary. We feel this will put us at an advanced point for discussion and save countless hours of changes and review. The paper copy of what I am providing you, each of you, has all the edited or added language in 14 font, bold and underlined, in order to distinguish it from the original draft. The copies provided today, however, are not in color. The people, as always, are more than willing to donate our time, as was necessary, preparing this draft today. However, we have already donated more than enough financial resources regarding the solar ordinance. Therefore, it was felt that distinguishing with large, bold font would suffice for this meeting. You have all been sent an email with a digital copy with the edited version, which has the text in bold, which is red, underlined, so you can review it. Just a few things to note. Paragraph C1B has been removed from the first draft presented last month to the second draft that is presented by the Planning Commission in today's packet. It was not stricken. It was removed. This is concerning to the people because realizing something has been completely removed is a lot harder than noticing when something has been added. Is someone on the Planning Commission tasked with draft review from one version to another? We are not sure if this is a clerical error or if it was intended to be removed. Paragraph C4, which states the required setbacks, has another error. The setback published in the draft version of your packet today has setbacks of 100 feet to a residence and 250 feet to all other lines and public road right-of-way. Last month's version was the opposite. Again, who is reviewing these drafts between from one to the next? In the edited version provided by the people, we have restored the setback to 1,000 feet based on the motion passed on December 20, 2022, by the Board of Trustees. We have attached a copy of the minutes from that meeting for your review. You will also find highlighted in those same minutes that the Board of Trustees passed a motion to hold a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the Solar Committee. The people would like to ask the Planning Commission why motions are being passed by the Board of Trustees, yet there has been no follow-through from this forum. The people are eager to meet with the Planning Commission to discuss the draft we have diligently prepared and presented to you today to proceed to a completed utility-scale solar energy ordinance that will properly protect the citizens of Conway Township.
Sarah, I have a question. I have an email, but I haven't attached it.
Something wrong with yours, George.
Went to my junk folder, by the way.
You were definitely on it.
My? The email that I received went to the junk folder.
I can send it again.
Thank you.
So I want to concur and congratulate the people, Sarah, and everyone for the work that was put into the presentation of the ordinance for you tonight. But I want to reiterate and to ask and repeat the question as to why the 1,000-foot residential setback was never restored to the ordinance when it was voted on by the board? And why this Planning Commission has somehow independently acted on its own, ignored it, or whatever you want to call it? It hasn't been done. It's not there, and it should be. And it's very concerning. This is not the first type of difficult interactions from the community with this Planning Commission. But I reiterate, that setback was restored by the board, voted on, and it should be in the ordinance, and it's not. Thank you.
Hello, Steve Smith, Rod Road. I didn't know if I'd be able to talk tonight because I had a cavity filled today, and the dentist wanted to numb my whole jaw. And I said, I told him, "You can't do that. I've got to talk at 7:00." I'm going to start my first discussion, what is good in the second draft. The preamble, purpose, and findings, which sets the tone for the whole ordinance, is excellent. It restricts utility-scale solar systems to the township's demonstrated need for energy use. That anything beyond that would have adverse effect on the community, and it also states that the township wishes to preserve its rural character and maintain property values. I do suggest adding something about the drains also in the preamble. And here's what I came up with. Whereas the Conway Township master plan states Conway is the only township in Livingston County that drains stormwater runoff into adjacent municipalities due to elevation, and therefore, the township highly encourages low-impact development to better manage stormwater than inherently solar panels channel water and that support posts entrenching damage tunnel lines, so that utility-scale solar systems must be carefully sited, designed, and kept to a minimum area. The overlay district, which restricts utility-scale systems only that area, is also very good, and that is also the approach that the Livingston County Commissioners are recommending. The fire suppression system is very good. I think much of the rest of the ordinance needs work, though. I haven't read Sarah Kelly's draft yet, but I strongly believe they are taking a good, common-sense approach to take the best out of all the ordinances that Mr. Homier has developed, and frankly, I'm disappointed that he did not do so himself. I do not understand that. I quickly came up with over 20 errors or clarifications that need to be done, including some very good things that the Planning Commission had in their October draft that were not included. There isn't even a definition for participating property and non-participating property. This is incredible to me. I only have time to go over a couple of points now. At the last meeting, a person recommended defining small, medium, and large systems. We currently have a definition for private and utility-scale systems, but I can see a large farm like Cubi-X with a dairy operation needing something more than a homeowner system. I mention this because I've been seeing ads in farm magazines that basically say, "Don't screw up your productive farmland leasing to utility-scale solar. Develop your own system for your own use on your nonproductive land and preserve your beautiful farmland for future generations." I will give a copy of that ad to the board. Also, at the last meeting, at the last board meeting, County Commissioner Paul Thump suggested requiring a filtration system to retain fire suppression chemicals and to prevent them from running off or being absorbed into the ground. I don't know what that entails. Hopefully, Mr. Homier does. I think it's a good point. To close, what the community was so upset with the Planning Commission's October's ordinance was the minimal setbacks, no restrictions on the size and location of the utility-scale projects, and some other very pro-utility-scale clauses, and the consequent harm to the community and wildlife. I think Mr. Homier's approach to restrict it to a minimal area based on demonstrated need in the overlay district is right on. For the rest, let's take a good look at what Sarah and Kelly have complied. Thank you. I'm submitting my notes.
No other public comment at this time? There'll be a second call? Okay. Approval of the Planning Commission meeting, April 10, 2023 agenda. I need a motion. For any additions, corrections? Motion? A motion by Jeff Klein, support by Lucas Curd to accept the April 10, 2023 Planning Commission meeting agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need, if there are any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes of March 13th, then I will... If there are no corrections, additions, I need a motion to approve the March 13th meeting minutes. Motion by Sean Morrison, support by Jeff Klein to approve the meeting minutes of March 13, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Zoning administrators report.
We have four land use permits left. One for Breezeway, one for House, and two for Steel Barns, and one waiver for electrical panel on Silver Road, South One.
Livingston County Planning Commission update report. They're a little bit behind on their posting of like their agendas and stuff like that. So I just, I put it in there as an FYI, if it's something that's updated, and you can take a look at what they're actually working on. And Dennis, did you have anything that you wanted to report out on?
No, that was just him.
Okay. Moving on to new business, Article 6. We need to, if you recall, the swimming pool issue. We received feedback from the Livingston County Planning Commission, that is in your packet, again, and they did make a recommendation. It's neither here nor there. We want to accept what their recommendation is under G. But we do have to pass this out and kick it up to the Board of Trustees so that they can take it up, they can make any kind of changes that they want to it, but we need to pass it out of this body. So unless there's any questions, if you approve letter G that they put in with the additional language, then just include that in their, in your motion. Does anyone have any heartburn over G?
Nope. Looks good to me.
Can I get a motion?
I will make the motion to accept G.
Support?
I will support that.
Motion by Sean Morrison, support by Jeff Klein to recommend to the Conway Township Board of Trustees to pass the amendment to Section 6.07, Supplemental Regulations pertaining to Yards. Letter A, permitted yard encroachments. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Homier is not here, and he didn't say that he wasn't going to be here. So I'm not sure, I mean, we can have our regular discussion because we are looking at a new ordinance that he drafted based on some of the things that we have been talking about, including some of the language that we had in our October draft. So if the Planning Commission wants to just discuss maybe as we reviewed it, any kind of questions or concerns or changes or whatever to the current ordinance that is before us from Michael, then we can do that.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to accept the written commentary and put on the public record of Sarah Porter and Steve Smith. Roll call vote, please.
So you don't want to discuss our review of it first?
No, I do, I do. I just, but I want to put what the commentary of the people was on the record of this Planning Commission. That's all I'm asking to do. That was the motion.
That's when I'll suck it down.
Do you want to repeat your motion?
I make a motion to put on the Planning Commission official record of this meeting the written commentary provided in email and written text by Sarah Porter and Mr. This is Sarah Porter and Mr. Steve Smith. Roll call.
Okay. Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Caleb?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, just in case. Motion carries. Okay. So as you guys read through this latest addition presented by Michael, were there any questions or concerns or additions or anything else that you wanted to add to this? Or any discussion that you wanted to have on any particular item?
I'd like to clarify or have create a definition of industry and put it into the actual ordinance. And I know it's stipulated as private solar, but if we could add maybe residential or private residential farm-type solar maybe to that one section just to give clarity to an applicant, you know, I mean, if we want to break it up that way, that's for discussion. So, you know, for clarity purposes, when a reader reads, you know, I don't want to have confusion with a resident reviewing it versus, you know, and I know it's broken out, but I'm just trying to simplify it for the end user and reader. I know it says private. I don't know if we could just mean private and then forward slash residential or something like that. I just thought it out there.
So I had marked off 4D, location, ground-mounted private solar energy system must be located in a rear yard or side yard and need the applicable setback requirements for the zoning district. So I think, I'm not sure, and I think George, it's getting a little bit to your point, is we have private, we have private rooftop and then private, what I call, side yard.
Right, right.
For their own use. Steve just brought up like farmers might be wanting to do something a little bit bigger for their operation. And then we have utility scale. So this, when we talk about, it's ground-mounted private solar energy systems. It has location, and it says applicable to the setback requirements for the zoning district. And when we had the conversation, and we have to repeat it again, when we talked about the 200-foot setbacks, that was for private side yard use.
For like in a residential set.
In a residential setting, yeah. So that's why that got changed to 200. And I'm wondering if we need to have a little bit more clarity, not just definition, but actually some, I think, specific carve-outs for utility scale, because I think there's, there will be different things that absolutely apply and make sense for utility scale but do not make sense for a residential piece.
And that's why I'm looking for some separation and put them in their own category, so.
Well, would a separate ordinance be better, or just a separate section in the ordinance broken down? Like a subsection where it's just for...
Just for...
Just for residential use?
Yeah.
And then not part of that ordinance will be for solar scale?
Anything in this section is directly related to residential use.
Right.
Or an application for their own use.
So just an amendment to the ordinance that we're working on just for that?
Or just clarify what's already written to indicate, so it could stipulate that to the end reader or an applicant as they read it. So they're not confused and they're dropping into the utility section when they're reading. That's all.
Just have a whole separate subsection that says just residential use only.
Yeah, because I think as the end reader reads it now, I think it's confusing.
Well, they shouldn't even have to read through the utility scale.
That's the point.
You'll be able to jump right to it.
So under 4F, under screening, it's requiring, so this is private solar energy systems. Talking about trees and shrubberies, that the way it reads to me is that their side yard would have to have all of the greenery around it. And I don't think that that's necessary, because you're talking about, what, two, three, four, or five panels or whatever, and then you're going to have all this shrubbery around it, which we want screen screening for the utility scale. But are we really going to require this type of screening for a side yard private use for solar energy systems?
I don't think we discussed anything about, for private, it was all for the utility scale.
Right. So I don't know if, you know, 4F is something that has been added and probably taken off of the goals that we want for utility scale, and it's being applied to private. So I just want clarification on that.
Well, since we're on that subject, they're stuck in the utility section. It talks about the natural vegetation, but then it talks about that green mesh screening, you know, like in, and it looks good when it's new. But a year later, it looks like, you know, I don't think we want to go there unless you add some sort of maintenance provision on that. I just don't think it's going to look good.
Well, we discussed that.
We discussed that.
I think we did talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't crack and fall out.
Just cracks and falls out, and if you want an example, you can go up to the one on Lyons and Richardson Road. And it's already on there, and it's already falling apart.
The reason why I brought it up, it's in there, so maybe you want to strike that or...
Strike that out.
Okay.
And I didn't find anywhere in there where he had 1,000-foot setback back in.
No, in fact, he left a couple of areas blank.
Yes. And to your question earlier about them voting on it, we knew they voted on it. We were just waiting for Mr. Homier to put it back into the ordinance. So it's not that we have avoided the situation, it's just that we haven't seen a draft with it in there yet.
You know, thank you so much for saying that.
Yeah, that's why, I agree with the 1,000-foot setback.
And the reason he didn't do it was if you have a property that you select as your overlay. If you have a 1,000-foot setback, it might have been possible, like, I don't think people, like, a 1,000-foot setback is like five properties wide. They're like two-acre parcels, like five parcels or something. I mean, it's enormous.
And that's why we need to see what his proposals for setback.
That's why we discussed last month that we need to see where the overlay district is to see if that 1,000-foot one was...
Even a 20-acre parcel, you might only have a couple acres or even available if you have a 1,000-foot setback.
But the only blanks in the ordinance that he left are for the battery storage. They're not for the setback on the property lines.
So I think until we know it's over, we really just can't...
So the setbacks that I saw, they were unchanged. The footage required.
Yeah, the footage is required.
He did say he was going to make the change.
I think he did talk about being on spring break for this meeting. I think he did.
Oh, he did, didn't he?
No, he was off last month.
That was last week.
I was expecting him to be here.
Okay, but they're really not unchanged, George.
They're...
They're swapped. They're backwards, to be clear.
I sit corrected.
Okay. The numbers somehow are flip-flopped.
So, they were changed, but they were?
But they're, for some reason, backwards.
Okay.
Which is frightening. So, on page eight, under, this really isn't tied to solar, but it does say, "A written plan conforming to the requirements of this ordinance for maintaining the subject property, including a plan for maintaining and inspecting drain tiles and addressing stormwater management." So, this outside of solar, we don't have, and I didn't find anything in our overall ordinance that requires anything of farmers that have drain tiles that might get broken or deteriorate or whatever, and then they flood an adjacent property that's not their own. So, we don't, we don't require any other inspection, or if a drain tile blows and it's, the water is in someone else's property, we have no requirements for the farmer or the property owner, the drain tiles take care of, correct?
Correct.
Um, under, so this is under site plan application requirements, number two, or A2. And nine.
Nine?
Yep. Location of all dwellings on the lot within 300 feet of the property lines of the participating property. So, I just started because we are, again, we're talking about setbacks or property lines or whatever. And so, to me, I'm just making a note to myself and making a note to the group, that this is an area where we're talking about, you know, to participating properties or whatever, and that we be sensitive. While we're having discussions with Michael to make sure that the language is solid and represents what we want. Now, again, this is under site plan application requirements.
Did you want to have a definition?
Well, you don't like definitions, so. When did you start liking definitions?
I've always liked definitions.
Question. Location of all dwellings on the lot, he has never liked definitions.
I've always liked definitions.
We believe you, George.
Definitely.
Location of, right, so just, I don't, I mean, we don't have to define it today or?
I was just saying you could define participating and not participating, that's all.
Right, and so, if we wanted to go back and, if you want to go back and do some research to find out if anyone else, any other ordinance has a definition of those two things?
I don't think it's that difficult to do, it's just.
Well, but we have to make sure that it's conforming with all the rest of our ordinance package, not just this. So, I just want to make sure it follows municipal language. Okay. Page 11, again, I start the system and location requirements, I start C, which gets to the setback of 150 feet, structure 250 feet from other lot lines, public road right away. So, I just started like, this is where we're going to have to address these particular sections. System and location requirements, D, we have discussed this several times. If the state law require, their requirement is 50 feet from the edge of any wetland, and this planning commission voted and agreed that we could increase this setback requirement to 150 feet if the planning commission determines that such a setback is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare.
It's actually 250.
We bumped it to 50?
Yes, yes, we did.
Thank you for that. I'm just highlighting that that is an area that's going to have to be addressed that we continue to talk about. I made a note to myself, evergreen trees shall be the Norway spruce in row one closest closet to the fence, closest to the fence. Row two shall be, and then someone must have done some research and said that the deer will eat those. We want to make sure whatever gets put up in these, they love our RvB days, that it be something that deer cannot eat, because then eventually it'll die and then you're going to have a maintenance problem. And then we have an enforcement problem.
They cannot eat?
They can't eat, they're?
They won't eat? They don't prefer?
They won't eat, yes. Okay, so E, same section, E. It says, "Dead or diseased vegetation shall be removed and must be replanted in a manner consistent with this section at the next appropriate planning time." It sounds like you're replanning the dead or diseased vegetation. So, that's just me making, it needs a clarifying point that it has to be new, not, we're not replanning dead or diseased.
So, just put a period after replant. And strike the rest.
Am I the only one who made little sticky notes? There's, there's more language on page 14, 12, drain tile inspections, we're requiring it of utility scale, but we don't require it of other farmers. Where a drain tile can harmful, can be harmful and impact a neighboring property that's not a part of their property, their residence with flooding. You'll note that under number 11 was stricken, "If batteries are used as part of the ground mounted solar system, they must be placed in a secure container or enclosure." We have all agreed since day one that we would not have batteries, which I believe battery storage is addressed under number 14, it's not permitted. Same thing, under 14, we have two fill-in blanks. Inverters and battery storage buildings must be setback at least blank feet from the lot lines of a non-participating house and at least blank feet from the lines of participating lots. So, I'm just circling that, that that needs to be filled in to discuss that.
We have participating lots and non-participating lots, we have participating property and not.
Yeah, we're going to have to get continuity of that.
That's all.
Speaking of setbacks, we may want to add some language, especially with the few subdivisions that we do have in our township. Because obviously, in a subdivision, we don't have two acres.
But you have a master deed.
We do, but most of these were written before solar was even discussed.
Your master deed still addresses?
Not if solar was not at that time. So, like secluded acres, for instance, was created, what, early 2000s? So, it mentions something of solar.
But you could address it in the master deed as an association?
We could, but we also have to follow Conway Township laws. So, if it says 200 feet from a participating house.
Understood.
So, I'm just saying maybe subdivisions have to.
But I think it needs to be addressed as a master deed, as an association.
I agree. I think just something along those lines written in these, that the association deals with.
Do you want something put in your ordinance that you're asking?
That's what I'm saying, if it's, if it is, then the association can take it up and deal with it versus, right now, we have to do what Conway Township says no matter what. Because we can't, we can't overrun Conway Township. We can make it stricter, but we can't overdo it.
You can be more restrictive.
Right.
But it'll go all the way back to the association and the master deed, which you have that control.
Yes, but again, if Conway Township's 200, we can make it less than 200, no, we can't make it less than 200, we can make it more than 200.
Is it even feasible on the size of lots or?
No, not on ours.
Sorry, no.
We're less than an acre.
Okay, and that's so, that's a whole other issue, okay? But I think it needs to be addressed through the private association, which is a private homeowner association.
I agree.
Which is separate from the public.
Correct.
It's a private issue, not a public issue.
Correct, I'm just saying something worded in these packages that says any association.
To send you back to, that's fine.
Yes. Yeah. Under 18, I just need clarification, access routes, access drives are subject to the approval of the Livingston County Planning Commission. Is it Livingston County Planning Commission or Planning, or Road Commission?
Road. Road Commission, because it's pass up.
I'll say the Road Commission's going to have a sale or private.
Well.
Well, the roads might have to be county scale.
Well, they're talking driveways, so they're talking internal driveways.
Well, I think it's internal driveways, but.
That would be us, that would be the planning commission if it access the public road, that's.
Which the first sentence addresses, oh no, Livingston Road. Dennis? If they're doing internal roads within the property for their access and stuff like that.
Site plan review.
That's site plan review.
So, come under site plan review. But does it go to the Livingston County Planning Commission specifically, or does it go to the Livingston County Road Commission?
The access onto a main road would be the Road Commission.
Just the drive.
Anything internal.
Outside the public right away.
Exactly, that, then, now you're talking site plan review.
Okay, all right, let me just make a note of that.
So, 33 and a third feet into off the center of the road? Is the Road Commission, or is it?
Well, it's not all right.
Is the East? But the Road Commission would be in charge of so, so many feet into the property?
No, they're only within the road.
And it's just the, it's just literally the permit to get on, there's like, the drive permit basically off of the building. It's not even the distance more, it's just that you have to, do you have to follow the?
Typically, it's a distance.
All right, I just needed that clarification, I asked you about the Road Commission.
That one, you guys are seeing enough.
Oh, sorry, Dennis.
You might also think about, if you're going to add something like that in there, you might also think about getting the fire authorities permit on these trails too, just because of the viability of the panel. You might want to get, you know.
Good call, Dennis, thank you. Under page 17, under 22, decommissioning, I don't, it says, "The decommissioning security shall be paid in cash."
Yes. That cash bond, cash.
So, it should be cash bond, or it should be, it just feels like, I mean, who's going to turn over 250,000, whatever.
That's a good question. That's how people don't walk away from the 250,000 or the million dollars or whatever it is, if it's cash. If it's, it's not, but they can walk away from it.
I just, I mean, we're not, we need to have, I think, the right language, cash just looks like cash, like it's.
Because of Marion ordinance, that's what they have.
Yep. And Caldonia too, now too. They're not going to walk away from it. If they are, it's going to cost them.
Under 27, transferability, I think we just need some clarification, because it says, "A special use permit for utility scale energy system is transferable to a new owner." So, there's two, so the new owner must register its name and business address. So, there could be, they sell the property with the lease on it. So, you have the homeowner or the property owner, that's not necessarily a business, right? But the, but the business, the operator could change. So, I just think that there needs to be, like, if the new owner of the property is just a regular person who's bought the property, with it comes the leases, that that must be recorded. It obviously would record because it's a sale. And then separate to that, if the operator, if a new operator changes, then they must register their name and business with the township. Does that make sense?
You have one for the operator, one for the owner.
Correct, so I just want to make sure we're separating that out.
But we have to put time here.
Transfer it or update it from this one.
Six months, three years?
It's not safe for months? I'd say thirty. I wouldn't say thirty, but.
It's plenty of time for them to notify us that they did it.
To at least file it with the authorities. You want sixty?
Right.
I mean, the sale goes through.
Forty-five, I mean, I'm just quoting the house, we got forty-five days under there, so I mean, I don't.
But after you close, right? So, everything's signed, it's a done deal.
Not even there, if you're switching hands.
So, you want to go sixty days?
No, I think forty-five, I mean, thirty seems like, we could happen, but it might be quick. Business-wise, I'm just personally.
He said forty-five, I said sixty.
Well, if you put thirty, then they have more times of fire days.
And that's all I got.
Covered most of them, but I see on page 13, Bryce Denniston got this one, but I know Marion had it, but there's, it needs to be added glare for aircraft, especially the airport.
You said that was page 13.
Page 13 or eight, it's not changed on this one either, but I know that Marion Township had it too.
The elimination from the outdoor lighting.
No, it was on solar panel glare for roads and.
I thought the FAA prepared that, the way they make panels.
Well, and we.
There is no reflection on the panels.
And Dennis and I.
Restrictive for cars, they really need to restrict, we don't restrict for airplanes.
The way the panels are made now, they're not, it's a non-reflective.
Yeah, because they want to suck in the sun. But, and Dennis and I have talked about, like, we probably need to have some kind of requirement that the FAA needs to do their work on it, because we do have an airport, which is, would be a unique feature to this township.
"A particular participating product, utility scale solar energy system must not produce any glare that is visible to neighboring lots or persons traveling on public, private routes, flashing or any light or anything. It also needs to handle the aircraft and probably on part of the bus." Dennis? Do you think, don't you think the FAA or the aircraft ought to be part of that?
Well, the FAA will do a study. Definitely you want that in the, in your ordinance, that that study has to be done by the FAA. I would also include Michigan Aeronautics. Because Michigan Aeronautics has some stronger laws than what the FAA has, so you might want to throw both of them in.
I guess I have one other one, but, no, it was just in my head, sorry.
Sure.
Well, it goes back to, I mean, I know we have, this called for a $10 million policy and this and that, but we write all these restrictions and what happens when whoever it is here at DTE, whoever chooses to ignore us on Killinger Road already, what's the remorse?
Cash.
Cash? They don't get it back, they want to stick to the rules?
Okay, but if it does, it's got to be written in here. If you do not respond an X amount of time, this needs to be done, because they're being ignored right now. I mean, we can write all the ordinance systems in the world, but unless there's a result of what happens when it's not taken care of in a timely fashion. what happens when it's not taken care of in a timely fashion.
What's the latest word?
This is what the result is, we shut it off.
Have they responded at all to any orders that you?
I mean, we're starting off bad, we all know that.
So, so the next step would be, they would lose their cash, right? But then you would also then, the township would be able to file suit in court to force them, for a judge, to abide by the township rules. If not, then the judge.
Those are long drag, no.
It does take a while, but that's real, that's important.
And I'm gonna add something here, that, you know, we've got farmers that have been here for years, they're getting dragged into this. And the way the fines are set up right now, correct me if I'm wrong, like that one for Killinger Road, he does, he fines them, it goes to the stinking farmer, not even going after the people that put it out there.
Well, it goes to them, but they better pay.
It goes, well, eventually, it reverts back to their taxes. So DTE can just, you know, play their game, it'll be, you know, the landlord that gets stuck without their taxes.
Well, we talked about putting a clause in there, it's in one of my minutes.
That's what I'm asking.
It was in one of my minutes in the past couple months, about holding the developer just as responsible as the landlord. So if we put that in there, then they're, I could get it wrong, joint and separately liable, so then you could go after one, both, together?
Well, contractually, they're bound together. On a contractual basis, supersede this township. Okay, so to your point, yeah, I would think that's correct. It's going to have to one or the other.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I don't see how you could do that.
I think we need to include operator, so we have developer, but then we have an operator that is a totally different entity, and then the landlord.
Something else, so everybody involved has skin in the game.
But once it goes to the operation, it would be the operator.
Right.
What about when they go bankrupt?
That's a question.
That's where the cash bond comes in.
That's where the cash is.
The media fortuit, fortuitur of the bond.
Yeah.
So, but you could put that language, right at the forefront. Okay? Because it hit them hard right out of the gate.
Yeah, it's gotta.
You gotta do it at the beginning, you can't do it at the end.
Good point. So make notes, I'll compile all of it, we'll have the minutes, and then we can ask Michael, like, all right, how do we incorporate some of these other things that are not currently on here and topic of addressing some of those likes? Did you have any questions? Anyone else?
Correct, I'm good, my memory's not the best. But, to address the question about having a meeting with, you know, a joint meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we talked, the discussion was, is are we allowed to have another meeting for the, the approval of the board, and wasn't that the last time we were talking about?
Just to have a non-public.
Yeah, I guess, that's what, it kinda got balled up, I don't think it ever got finished, Michael. So.
Well, okay, I'll make a motion, we have a meeting, a special planning commission meeting with the solar committee and the public, to discuss the solar ordinance and the draft that provided by the cert authority.
Or, I'm sorry. Give it done.
Well, obviously, you have, so we can get, yeah, you know.
Well, I think we all wanna do this, I think we all wanna get this over with, so.
I agree, and I think going back and forth between us and Mr. Homier trying to take what we're saying, because we're not writing these drafts. Homier is writing the drafts. So, there is obviously some communication.
I'll take a little extra, like, the whole process.
Yes, because I wasn't the anti-widder this Friday.
No.
Sorry, I'll listen.
So do we plan a meeting with people who are pro?
Anybody.
But are we taking, are we taking recommendations from people who?
Open meeting.
It would be open, it would be open to the, or open to the public, and then you can have a special section for the committee for the solar, where they would be able to get up and speak about this, you know, and discuss this and any other changes.
But the whole solar committee is only one-sided. They've all shown up at the meetings with no solar field, like, they don't want solar. They've made it abundantly clear. They haven't included anybody from the other side. That would, that's what a committee is, right? You're supposed to have resolution from both sides. And that's not what's going on here, it's just people that don't want solar.
Because they're not showing up.
Hold on, hold on, we've had public meetings, we've had many planning commission meetings, we've had many board meetings, that those pro people could have been here and expressed them, and they have, okay.
Were they, were they invited to the meeting, were they invited to be on the solar committee?
They're all asked, wake up. I'm not.
The people?
Yeah, wake up.
People were not going to get them.
Four people that showed up in no solar shirts have been, that's who's on.
Oh, we didn't have the shirts yet, if you really wanna know.
Hold on, hold on. That's not true.
And why would they help write an ordinance if they were anti-solar?
They already helped write the ordinance.
Okay, well, we took, hold on. So can we, can we address it, or, I mean?
Pro, con.
Open that, I'm not discriminating against anybody, so this is the time to do it. Regardless of what side of things, run, let's get it over with. That's all I'm saying.
There was a motion and support, so we can have a discussion.
What if we had it open to the public meeting, where there's a section for the solar committee, and a section for, I guess, the other side? If they want to speak.
I think.
I do agree, we need to have.
That's exactly what they were telling us, if we didn't show up.
Hold on, now, hold on. The way Homier addressed it was, it could be an agenda item. If you wanna do an agenda item pro, an agenda item con, fine. But you, they'll have, everybody will have their time to speak, whether they're for it or against it. You could do it separate, a pro solar, or anti-solar, or however, con of solar, however you wanna do it. But I wanna get this over with, I'm tired of this.
The public meetings we had at the school, there was people there, they were, that were for it, there were people there that were against it.
Yeah, we had it, we had it.
There was people there that spoke against it, who said it was okay.
Everything that's in here is against it, they've made it impossible.
We're not, yeah, like, solar, we're pro-adv.
You forget the letters from Ranger Power. No, that, no. We are having our discussion, no public comment until at the end of the meeting.
All I'm saying is, I just wanna get this over with. So let's, can we set, we have to have a vote, but then we have to set a date if, if the vote was.
Well, it has to be a date where I'm either Homier or we have planners here.
Well, it'd be a planning commission meeting.
Well, but Homier, planners, we have no planners, so we, at least we have Homier.
No, 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 we don't have.
We don't have a planner.
No, I agree with that, I agree with that, I think we all want Homier here.
Now, Homier doesn't know necessarily our township laws as well, does that, do we bring in Ms. Kova or Mrs. Kova?
No, no.
She knows our township.
No, no. Mr. Homier will charge specifically for the solar ordinance.
Correct.
The next word six, unless the board chooses otherwise.
I just, I personally don't know, and I'm just speaking my opinion here, I don't know if it could be township laws, like, the back of my hand, so if we're writing it wrong.
Your question would be a board issue. Your question would be a board issue.
Right. Yep. Okay, so motion by George, support by Jeff, to have a public meeting with people who are part of the solar advisory.
We need to just leave it a public meeting, just a public meeting.
With solar.
We don't have a, we don't have a date, that's still not a public meeting, doesn't do the song.
Well, it's to address the solar ordinance, so, public meeting to address the solar.
With the solar.
Segregation.
I mean, it's open to the public, it's open, we can make it open to the public.
But, but remember, if you're, they're not on an agenda item, they don't need to get the three minutes, and that's what we're trying to do. On the agenda.
But, that's my point, is you can make an agenda item of discussion of the solar ordinance for a solar committee and the planning commission, go over it line by line, or paragraph by paragraph, and then we still have the open calls to the public.
Right. So just, I would say, you know, why shouldn't we have a special meeting, open to the public, with the agenda item for these solar.
Right, and if, and if you wanna have the pro section of the solar, fine, that way we don't discriminate.
Right.
Right.
So we're being fair to everyone.
And we just, we just, it's a date until we talk, the lawyer can get it.
It's gonna be determined.
Yeah, date's gonna be determined.
Allos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussion on this? New seven being business. No, I just think we need to get better communication with Mr. Homier, and maybe this meeting will help, because there's so many, like, it has been pointed out, clerical errors, there's been things that we've asked to be changed that haven't been changed, and it's frustrating to go month by month, by month, and to ask for certain things to be changed, and it's just like. He's gonna make a move. Update shipping containers as primary residence or accessory use. I contacted the Livingston County Planning Commission to see if anyone in Livingston County has taken up this issue. The closest is Marion Township, but they have not passed their ordinance yet, they have either, and/or new planners and/or attorneys, so they're still reviewing it, but they actually started their work, gosh, he said over a year ago. So, I think originally we were discussing, do we even wanna allow it? One. Two, if we don't wanna allow it, then we need to come up, we need to come up with something, whether allowing it or not allowing it. Or, if we're allowing it, then here's the ordinance that's gonna pertain to it, so.
We're talking about building?
We are talking.
Houses with it?
I think we're talking about.
Right.
Storage or living.
Yeah, all right, so getting back, so storage, we allow storage, and Marion Township allows for storage in industrial and commercial areas only. But then they have some nuances, right? They want it to look a little presentable, they don't want it to look like crap, even though you're doing storage. Nothing to do with, oh, you're renovating, so you have an iPod in your, or a pod in your driveway, or whatever, so that's like a temporary use type of thing. So the way that he went about it, or they have gone about it, is that the state code has a structure of over two hundred square feet. Well, some of these eight by twenty storage containers come in at a hundred and sixty square feet, so they, some of them were trying to blow the line. So they were adjusting for their storage containers in industrial and commercial areas only, and then if it is temporary. The interesting thing is, is he said, if they want to do a house, or build some kind of structure, whether it's one, five containers, or whatever, as soon as they start cutting into it for windows, doors, or garage door, or whatever, they have now compromised the structural integrity of the actual structure, which means it would now violate state building code, of which the Livingston County Building Department would now be involved. So he said that essentially, if you're gonna, you can't violate the state building code, you're gonna have to hire an architectural engineer to make sure whatever you're doing to these shipping containers is gonna be whole. And so what people think are, I'm gonna get a shipping container for three thousand dollars, I can do some water, some electric, plumbing, or whatever, live off the grid, whatever, is not going to work, because once they get an architectural engineer involved, you're talking about permitting and all the requirements that they're gonna have to do according to state code, you're now looking at a shipping container that you wanted as a house is now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, give or take that. I mean, he was, he said it is like such a nightmare for property owners to have, that he just doesn't see that anything is going to happen, say, in Marion Township. That doesn't mean that someone just wants to live in a shipping container, and a hundred and fifty thousand, when you talk about the median house range of two hundred and eighty thousand in Fowlerville, a hundred and fifty thousand doesn't sound so bad. So, I guess we can leave it where we wanna do more research on it, and we wanna come up with an ordinance that just says, you can only have shipping containers used for storage in industrial and commercial areas, strictly prohibited for residential.
And anything over two hundred square feet, which is the shed size, that you have to get a permit.
That's the way the county has been treating them, the building department. And for storage, under two hundred square feet like us, no permits, anything. Two, over two hundred square feet, you have to put gravel, foundation minimum. And then if you wanna add it onto a house, or people, into them, whatever, then you need to get your structural engineer or an architect to get just the footage design, and then, then the building. So, like you said, cutting into it. The state's come out with a new code, which they don't have yet, for commercially settings on these.
But they are outlawed for in the twenty twenty-one IBC.
Yes. Twenty twenty-one? They are outlawed, it is in, that's the one there.
I know a lot of them that they're making into homes are brand new, and they're structurally designed for that purpose only. So the doors are already cut, everything's been rewelded, reinforced, the windows are already cut out, reinforced. So, depending on, I mean, if you're gonna buy like, five of them for five hundred bucks a piece, and they're all rusty, and you're gonna slap them together, it's not gonna work. So, that's, I don't think that's what people are looking to do, I think they're looking to buy the new ones that are integ, integrally, the integrity for the structure is already taken care of by a structural engineer that works for the company that sells them.
Right.
Because I've researched a little bit online about buying the new ones, and, I mean, they're, they're really nice.
Yeah.
And then the insides are beautiful, and I've seen a lot of their homes done that way. But it's just a matter of whether or not they're taking care of.
But if they're not attached.
Doing their homework ahead of time to buy the new ones that are already done.
If they're not on like a foundation, they're not.
Right, but they're still, you still have to have a foundation, and greenfield, and all that stuff too, but that all falls under the gun.
Yeah, but.
So I'm going to send you what, Dave, the zoning administrator from Marion Township, it's their draft, if you will, they already went through a public hearing, so I'm gonna send it to you, just so that you can take a look at it. Gary and I know Randy said that they're, you've already had some inquiries, so this is something that we need to, we need to decide if it's, if we're gonna allow it, or we're gonna prohibit it altogether, or we're going to allow it, and then what regulations need to be assigned to it.
Randy prohibited.
Pardon?
We're living in.
Okay.
We think both.
But how do you, how do you, as a zoning administrator, handle the roll-off sheds that come out of rollback, and they roll them off, whether it's chicken coops or storage alley, you handle that?
Same as square footage.
If they're over two hundred square foot, then.
Land use permit.
Land use permit.
But they can, they can do that.
That's one of the, the way of treating these, is the same, storage that's under two hundred square feet, you need, then, you need a permit, and then, county's gonna make, want you to put gravel underneath it, but, so far.
Well, I'm just trying to think, if you didn't see it, what would be the, what's the issue, if you don't see it?
Yeah. You don't know.
Can't you have like five of them that are all a hundred and sixty, they're all on your, each one's.
You can have accessory buildings up to a hundred and fifty percent of square footage of your house, so, you have two thousand square foot house, you can have a boatload of them out there.
Just can't have them connected together.
Yeah.
So, what's the will? Do we want it prohibited, or do we want an ordinance, an overall ordinance with regulations?
I'd like to allow use in stipulations.
Yeah, everything else is.
It's affected for summary, for storage.
For storage, yeah.
And, we're talking about living?
No, no, I was referring to storage.
Okay, then.
I would prohibit the living.
Prohibit, that's what I was asking. So we're prohibit dwelling? So then, so then what we have in, we have in the ordinance about shipping containers for storage, right?
That's why we're asking.
That's the sorry ones that come in and they're, they're.
They come in, they're here.
They came before the ordinance, so.
Yeah, it's like, they're gonna be here.
Okay, so now we need an ordinance regarding storage. While we have some folks want to do some additional homework.
I like the guidelines that Gary read about what the county was doing as far as.
Yeah.
The square footage and putting a concrete or limestone foundation on it.
Yeah, minimum is the limestone.
Yeah, limestone is the minimum, I know, I've heard. I had read some articles about crushed asphalt too. And within, within a contained framing, like maybe with two by sixes all the way around.
Yeah.
Crushed asphalt, set it on top of it.
I don't think we could go wrong if we just go with the standards there for the county right now.
Okay.
That, that would keep us out of trouble.
Can you, can you send it out to all of, or send it to me and I can send it to everyone? And then if we wanted, if you guys want to just take a look at what Marion Township, I've sent this out to you. You can take a look at it. But if like, if it makes more sense to just go with the county because there's been additional changes, then let's just do what the county's doing.
Yeah, call them, see what he's got.
Okay. Any other discussion on shipping containers?
Not at this time.
Any planning commission member discussion on anything?
Well, back to shipping. I, I would, they have what they call, I think Dave has too. They call, they have one trippers, they call them one trippers?
Yes.
Okay, so they're typically six months on, on the seat. But then the, oh, there's another classification. Cardo worthy or something like that.
Cardo worthy. Okay, but they're, they're, they're leak proof, they're guaranteed to be leak proof.
Yeah, that they're.
Roll proof, all that stuff.
But the wood trippers, they look almost like brand.
Yeah, they're brand new. I mean, the paints, the paint's brand new on them.
But to Jeff's point, some of them after, the cardo worthy ones, they start off sort of mid-level.
That's the other, that's the other side of it. I mean, we got, we got trailer, semi-trailer park. You got, and then you, the farmer ain't gonna follow this.
Well, no, the farmer, yeah. They fall under different regulations and so.
What would the size of the radius requirement?
I think it could be an acre requirement.
Because I don't think it's included once.
Well, that's, that's, that goes back to their own.
To the accessory use though, because we do have a requirement, the size of your home or whatever.
Well, but.
I mean, it's not.
Below two acres and above two acres, correct?
Correct.
Difference, shown each wise. Because if you got 100 acres, I mean, what?
Yeah.
Fill the place up.
Anything else?
I, new, new, I do. And I just want to throw it out to you guys and these guys to hear. Bill has already, I got an email from him, but I guess I want to bring it up. I'm a concerned citizen for this intersection at Chase Lake and Follicleville Road that I live near. And I've gone to a lot of people nearby and Bill Grubb is, I met with the other day and followed up with it. But I'm kinda tired of pulling people out of cars that are upside down or in a fire or whatnot, so. It doesn't take $200,000 and it shouldn't take somebody else to die before we do something with the intersection. So I made some recommendations and Bill did follow immediately with it. Bill, thank you, and I don't. Do you have a response?
I sent it to the engineering department and the engineering department from road commission came back and said they're forwarding on to planning. And a, and a different engineering to review that. So far I have not seen a response. That was just last week.
I didn't get that response, but anyways, it's just pretty concerning and it isn't a million dollar project. We need rumble strips, we need double lighted signs, we need some blinking solar lights that blink red on Chase Lake Road to stop the traffic from crossing. But this last one is, is enough for me, so I kinda took it upon myself.
How many has there been?
Well, it doesn't, I don't have that number. When I talked to the investigator. When the investigator was investigating the last one, he gave me the guys to even talk to the county after I started.
We're talking like flashing lights, four-way stop.
No, it's, it's.
He's, unfortunately, you're not gonna get much control of that, that happens. Just by.
Well, I, I, this is.
We're not going, we haven't seen it happen before.
I don't, I personally agree I don't want that, but that's unfortunate what it.
I know when they came to us.
And it's multiple fatalities.
Right, multiple.
Because I can list roads around here that we've had that in the county that they literally have to have multiple fatalities have before they will even put up the flat, you know, the red one way and the yellow the other way. It's.
But he's talking about like really low hanging fruit, like a rumble strip.
Well, I think.
That's still, that's all part of it, but it's still.
Because we were talking about the depth. If you're coming from the east, you're kinda looking past because you kinda see the hill. And, and I've lived here for 50 some odd years and you're, and if you zone out, you're like, oh, yep, that, but then you get, now you have to stop. So if you have like something that blinks or the rumble strips or whatever, like be alert, be, you know.
Be prepared.
Something is going to change.
Stop a head sign to the flashing. It's a strange structure.
Didn't you say that it was a slight distance issue, clear view?
When you're coming from, coming from the east at the stop sign, that's what happened with the last one. Headed west and you look to the south.
Yeah.
First off, the east needs to be cleared all the way back to the fence. But the road dips beyond the intersection and the trees are swollen because of the road then being lower, the wider part of the tree is there. But the other thing is, is there was no passing sign right in, right in almost a clear view, looking through the south. And that's what, this gentleman that come the last time stopped at the sign detective says, and then pull out and then he's hit. But, you know. He's still.
The site distance would be taken care of.
Right, and that's, that's just, I mean, this is, this is the one day.
How much of a conversation was this when we decided, when they decided to let Creaghers build the party store there in the first place? Didn't, didn't that come up and didn't, didn't the planning or road commission do a plan?
This accident had nothing to do with this.
And honestly, I, I don't think you.
No, you get increased traffic in that area.
But the fact that you put a business there was the road in general.
So there's more traffic now than there would have been before in a concentrated area. So people are pulling out of the party store, they're pulling out of the party store to go to the stop sign.
You had traffic.
They go multiple directions.
You had traffic when they were in the.
Yeah, traffic would track on Sunday.
But it, I think, I love it when actually living there.
It's more busy there.
It may sound weird, but I think that, I think that the party store has benefited from my view from going down Follicleville Road because more people are slowing down to stop. More people are paying attention because they know someone's gonna pull out from. But the one that's going this way, Chase Lake Road, they simply just blow its intersection, so.
Oh, I'm sure it happens. It happened to me.
Yeah, Nicholson and Nicholson and Chase Lake scares me. Yeah, that's the next worst one to me. I mean, that is, I've had a couple.
That should have learned four-way stop years ago.
Who enforces.
It is, it still blow through it. It is.
Since when?
Oh, three years.
Oh, no, I'm thinking, I'm still.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I was just talking about Lovejoy Road. I know in the past, Lovejoy, Follicleville Road has been an issue for cyclists and cats. The, the farmer tends to plant, yeah. No, when you're coming in the home from east, yeah, Lovejoy, like going south on Follicleville Road.
And I hope, I only feel that I've had eliminated or, or planted too close to the site. This is just, this is cheap. I mean, I could go fix it myself. It's like, you know, it's just.
The planning commission.
Bill, planning.
Planners for the county.
Bill even admitted, I mean, this is, if we can come up with the financing, I'm sure through our township and put an extra sign or a solar sign with a blinking set of yellow lights like, like to block across walls. I mean, it could be that simple. Anyways, it's just something on my mind, but I'm just, I'm not gonna wait for somebody I care for to be killed in an intersection so that somebody else can get a red light. Just a picture.
Will we be the first issue? Not, not just accept the answer, whatever you do.
Oh, I'm not, I.
We have the first, nothing will ever change.
I spoke to him and I said, I'll be following up with this and the township will be good. I'll be back in touch, so it's just by the plan. The road commission is not very responsive, especially. Now, it's. Mike Varell, he's the, he's the county safety engineer.
So we only keep doing some, I'll not be asking what we need to do. Okay, and the board. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, any other planning commission discussion? Well, we've talked about it with Homer here, so we'll have to have that conversation again. We can make a recommendation to the board that we need to have planners. Because we've got not just solar stuff, we've got other.
There's a whole master plan.
Well, the master.
Renew the master plan, the shipping containers, it needs to be discussed.
Is anyone of those? Don't hurry.
Well, this is not the one we got rid of.
Well, and Homer here recommends that we bring it back, so.
I disagree.
I guess the board can continue to have that discussion.
I haven't heard that from Homer here, so I don't know where that's coming from.
He said it to us.
When?
Two months ago.
Zoom meeting?
Okay, any other planning commission member discussion? Are you done? Seeing none? We'll go to number nine, the last call to the public.
I'm gonna attempt to take a breath because I'm highly offended by the comments made. Mr. Kurt, in any meeting I've seen, you've not opened your mouth once to advance this ordinance, not once. And then today, it's like we're finally getting somewhere and you finally decide to say something and all it is is that we're anti-solar. Wake up. The people that wore shirts, guess what we did? We awakened Livingston County. That's what we did. We went everywhere telling people because nobody knew. I don't know if you care where you live, building a house out there while all surrounded by field, I, I would have thought you'd have different opinion. I can tell you that yesterday on Easter, I spent over nine hours trying to progress this ordinance. That's longer than you've spent since you've been in that seat. And I want to make it very clear that we are not against solar. We are against utility scale, solar tsunami, blanketing this township, decommissioning our agricultural land, raising our water. Have you seen the water in the township right now? The drains are full. We are against the toxicity inside of them. We are not against solar. We want safe parameters. We want an overlay that protects our people. We want the community we chose to live in to somewhat resemble the place we decided to buy a home in. Do you want to take a 33% decrease in that new house you're building? Nobody does. A lot of people, it's their biggest retirement asset. We are not anti-solar. And I will tell you also this, committee, throw the committee out. Throw the solar committee out. The committee was four people that happened to be at a meeting that got elected to try to help. And that's what we've been doing. This committee has grown to everybody, everybody who wants to help. It's neighboring townships that are sitting down on our Friday nights, on our Easter Sundays, going through 12 ordinances that he's written, Homer, to try to get the best language in this for everybody. This is a greed initiative by our government that we're paying for it. That throws salt in the wound. They're not effective. The sun's barely out, but the, the state wants it, the feds want it, we get it. So let's decide what we need to do as a community. This isn't everybody's Willy Wonka get rich ticket. We moved here too. And every property that our house sits on, a farmer owned. It was okay when they wanted to sell it for me to build, right? That was okay when they wanted to cash in and all of a sudden it's not. I find what you said very offensive. I think you need to step back and realize we have done a lot to try to advance this ordinance. And we really do want to sit down. And if I can make one comment about the town hall. I've been to a lot of other town halls, I've been to a lot of other meetings. Kahakta runs, has done a beautiful job. And when you're describing it up there and you say, so that people can have a chance to talk. And then I don't want to get up to a town hall, honestly, and go, okay, you guys, um, I don't want to just state my bullets. I want to get to a section and say, okay, let's talk about setbacks. Let's look at what we have, what do the people think? And make notes and go back and forth. Open discussion. Otherwise, we're gonna do this month after month, it's been months. We feel like we're backwards, not forward. So if we could get to more of this big dialogue would be really great. Based on what you have, maybe based on what we've provided you today, I hope. Homer here seems very receptive to putting things in that people are requesting because honestly, he's about litigation. If you hear him anywhere, he's about us not getting sued. He doesn't care what trees we pick. He doesn't care about most of what we do because it's not his forte. His forte is that we don't get sued and we don't go bankrupt. And the people understand that there's a big gap between what we need as residents and not getting sued. And there's a middle, somewhere there's a middle. I think we're almost there, but you're not helping it. Those, that, Mr. Kurt, is what the people are about, not anti-solar.
Kennedy Parker, 7,000, heinere road, I'm the partner, not the quarter. Thank you so much, Sarah. Mr. Kurt, I'm not offended by what you said necessarily. I guess I'm just not surprised. I give you a surprised look, but I don't have one. I, I feel like you've wasted a lot of time or you haven't been paying attention or you feel like there's a divide, us against them, or anti-solar or solar. The people of this community came together in small numbers and, and started forming an entire support group here, not because we were anti-solar, as Sarah said, but because we had an interest in preserving our community and finding out what the community really wanted from the situation. We spent money on our own to send out little postcards for the community to be aware and to get together and come to meetings. In fact, we shut one down here and we had to move it to the middle school. That was your community membership, Mr. Kurt. That was a majority of people coming to a meeting to say what they wanted. We also found out, and I'll go back to December 20th, 2022, Mr. Grubb, when you had a meeting here in this very room that wasn't published till the 11th hour with Ranger Power. A meeting that was supposed to be, I guess, a secret or private or something, but it wasn't publicized. And then group members from this constituency right here descended in and we had a community meeting. Nobody's against solar. They're against what might destroy their community, their, their property values, what they came here for. I didn't move out here with my husband to see a bunch of solar panels. And I'm not trying to money grab something to destroy my, my neighbor's property value or their land, or their life, or their experience, or their health and safety. There's not enough known things about all of this stuff. But this isn't anti-this or anti-that. This is a group of meetings that you've had ever since all of this started where anyone can come. There's no membership due at that doorway. There's no anti-solar group or pro-solar anything. Anybody can come, it's an open meeting. And there's been a lot of input from these solar groups. In fact, the ordinance from a thousand-foot setback somehow got in a letter from Ranger Power to this very township and got in the ordinance. The one that we're fighting to have that thousand-foot setback put back in the residential property lines. So there is no divide here except for what you suggested. And you're wrong about that. We want to protect our community and we're a small group advisory to have people in this township government pay attention to what the community wants. That is your. That is your job, sir, to represent this community. That is your job, not to be divisive and suggest that there's some divide here. We may not agree, you're right about that. But the people here are about the community here. You better get on board.
All right, me again. Mr. Kurt, I am publicly calling for your resignation. I would like to make you clear that everything that we advised putting in the ordinance was to protect the community. I'm not for putting something in the ordinance just to make it difficult for solar companies. What we suggested is to protect the community. If you had paid any attention to anything we have said, you would have known that. You have to understand, the community is overwhelmingly opposed to massive utility scale development. Most of what was objectionable in that October ordinance, we know from our Freedom of Information request, was from Ranger Power and from DTE. There was even an attorney from DTE that did not identify herself as an attorney, only as someone knowledgeable that had input. Now, that was not kosher. We could have got her license revoked. We didn't. Also, I don't know if I made it clear to the commissioners in my first stack. I made a list of like 23 suggestions which Keela has. I asked you to read that. I didn't make a copy for everyone, but Keela has it. There's some nitty-gritty in it, there's some things you've covered already. There was some things where I thought you had better wording in your October ordinance than what Homier has. Something, I'm hoping you'll answer, also in your ordinance, it says there's two overlay districts allowed, the community solar and also open space community. And I'm hoping when I'm done, maybe Megan, you can comment on what this open space community is. Because I have no idea. Something in Homier's ordinance, it doesn't even mention an escrow account. It just says financial. You were right on, Keela, the communication is horrible with Homier. I know he's busy with many townships. We either got to get a planner, if he's not going to do it, we got to get a planner. And I thought your discussion tonight was very good. I appreciate the detail. There's also things, I don't know how things fit in with the master plan and like you suggested, Megan, so I appreciate all that. Again, Lucas, I don't think you belong on this committee and I ask you to resign. Thank you.
Jason Sims, Hainer Road. My thing that got me, which I've thought of in the past, but then somebody brought it up today, which was good, is fines, fees, stuff like that. You know, if a tree dies and yet says that they're supposed to plant a new tree next year when the planting season comes. If they don't, we're going to go to court and spend thousands of dollars in attorney fees and stuff to plant a tree. Or we say, you know, you got to plant it by this date, or it's $2,000 and we'll plant the tree. You see what I'm saying? Like some sort of fees and penalties for everything, you know? Not just for a tree, or not just because the fence is jacked up, or they didn't put the road in right, or, you know? All the way, every step of the way, there should be penalties if it's not done correctly. Just so we don't end up in court spending thousands of dollars suing some multi-billion dollar company that we can't afford, but they did, it's nothing to them, just like the flow on the road here. You know, that's my main point is, is that there should be penalties for everything. You know, of course, don't make it a million dollars for a tree, but $2,000 to replant a tree, you know, something like that. And that could come out of the escrow or whatever. That way, you already got the money, you just start deducting it off of them. Jim Cho, 7540, Fowlerville Road. Stop me if this has already been addressed, because I can't hear real good and the sound system's really working well today. My question is about, I know we were talking about the setbacks for the panels themselves, but the security fencing is not subject to any setback requirements per this ordinance right here. So, does that mean I can have fencing right on my property line? And what about a public road as we go down Fowlerville Road? Or how far off it needs to be, you know, per law on that? What I would recommend or suggest is, if it's going to be on my property line, I would like a nice fence. Not the square with the wood posts. I mean, I got to look at it. All right, thank you.
I know.
Your name real quick.
Steve Weiss, 7104 Solar Route. That you took a little beating there. Pretty obvious, but, yeah, the comments weren't real good. All these meetings are completely open to anybody to come to. We're not anti-solar, which has been stated, trying to protect the community. But any of these people, the only people that I've really heard come to these meetings and say anything pro-solar were the solar companies, DTE, or a couple of farmers that stand to make a boatload of money off of us at our expense. Then you hear them say, well, we don't want to go to the meetings because we feel intimidated.
We signed a nondisclosure, that doesn't help either.
It's an open meeting. So, the comments there about having who say what, anybody can come here and say whatever they want, unless they've signed a nondisclosure, but I don't see anybody else here, is what I'm getting at. I haven't heard anybody else. So, as has been stated, we would like you to represent the community.
Hi, I'm Michelle Elekman, it's 2501 Lovejoy Road, just literally across the street from my township. I was, I really just had a question, when there might be more information about the proposed district, particularly if you're going to move to having a town meeting. Some of the things are kind of abstract, and so there's a little more information about what that might be or what it might include, where it might be. So I was just wondering if there was any information on when that might be presented or available.
After Homier has done his research, he's already suggested an area. Normally, we wouldn't have this back and forth, but I think it is of concern that he has not disclosed that as of yet. And it's, it won't be on a farmer's land. I mean, that's, you're looking at, so if you're familiar with the trailer park issue, the master plan required that spaces be identified and there are certain parameters, like a paved road or, you know, whatever, where a trailer park can go. Like, the landowner can say, yep, we're going to go ahead and execute in your, from your master plan, then a trailer park can go here, we can't stop it. It's already been identified as that area and they're just going to have to go through all the rules and ordinances or whatever to put in a trailer park in that area. Now, if they wanted to say, put it across the street here, that's not in the master plan, so they can't put a trailer park here. So, the overlay district is going to be a selected piece of property that may or may not be owned by a farmer that has an interest in having solar, a solar project. So, it's going to be in someone's backyard. And it won't necessarily be a farmer who actually wants it. And it's going to sit there, and at some point, the current landowners are like, no, we're not going to do that. They can always sell that property. And whoever they sell that property to wants the solar, then they can activate the solar. And now a solar field, farm, or whatever will go in that area.
So, has Homier indicated when he might present that, or?
I was hoping he was going to do it tonight. I've since got a text message that he had a family obligation that he forgot to inform us about. So, he is not going to be here tonight, obviously.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, thank you.
Can you answer Steve's question on an open space community?
I don't have a definition of the open space community other than if that's the spot where he thinks this is the open space that it can go in.
Well, it sounds like it's a different overlay. What?
My understanding of it, it would be located in an open space community that's already been designated open space. And then, like secluded as an example, would have a certain area of acreage that is open. And I don't, but I think that that provision is allowing that use in that open space area. But I could be wrong.
Well, if you could point out more, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I would hope that when we schedule this town hall meeting, a lot of those questions.
He'll be there, and then he'll have a map, and then he can put up on the wall and say, here it is. I'm hoping that's what happens. So, I think that is what his plan is. I don't know what his family obligation was, but, you know, we all know family comes first, so. I mean, you know, he is doing a job for us and he, you know, he's at that point where he has to explain it all to us. So we have some idea what he's talking about, even we don't know. We have general ideas of where it may be, but we can't do anything about it until he actually tells us, okay, this is where I want to go.
Hi, Karen O'Neil, 6x72 Hainer Road. I was just going to go back to what this gentleman said. You know, if they're going to have to put like a $250,000 security bond or whatever, or cash bond or whatever it's called, could we do something like this gentleman said and do like, first violation, we're taking this much from that cash. Second violation, we're taking this much from that cash. And keep on, every violation, keep, take your money.
Well, also make them have to go and put it back in.
Right. It's just like a maintenance.
Yeah, because they'll just let you go ahead and drain it and then walk away.
Right, right.
They'll say, yeah, that was a nice thing. You just became a maintenance company.
But that way, we're not suing over a tree, we're suing over $250,000 or something, a million dollars or whatever.
I think the bond, though, is for decommissioning.
Yep.
Yeah, well, yeah, I get that's what that is, but I'm saying we should add a separate bond. Like an operations bond or something. A maintenance bond, yeah.
Did you hear that?
But make it to where, like, our tree's going to cost more than them putting their tree in, you know what I mean? Or, you know, our fixing the fence is going to cost more than them fixing the fence, or whatever. Just so it puts more incentive on them actually fixing the problem versus us having to maintain their grant.
Any other?
What? I know there's some here that were Marion Township, but Mr. Homier also didn't make it to a Marion Township meeting. And he sent an associate, myself, his associate was a lot better than he was. She, and, and take this a little bit, they had a screen for the town hall meeting. They had a screen and that gal was very quick at her computer skills and she was able to adjust right there in front of everybody and they walked down through it. And when they were done, they were through it. We could do a lot of conversations throwing back and forth here, but if we could try to schedule something where we had it on a screen that was large for people to see. But I don't know if he's capable or not, I'm not saying he isn't, but that gal that they sent was very good. Maybe somebody else was supportive, whether you think that or not, but she was like able to adjust this thing, boom, and they were done.
To elaborate on that, he did comment that he has that ability to do that at a meeting right here. Okay, there may be a screen issue, but he has that computer program.
Well, I think for the town hall meeting, we need to look at something because we're in a difficult spot here. I don't know.
I think if you could just get a little more white than she, you can hang it over that back window.
If we get a white wall somehow or another, if we flip it around, we can cover the player doors.
No, but maybe place one of those back windows and just broadcast it.
It would be something that we could adjust and just walk through it with everybody at the same time. Seemed to progress pretty good.
That's what, that's what he intends to shoot through.
Couldn't we borrow something from the school?
She did good, I mean, I, obviously, she's quite a fellow.
Megan, could we borrow something from the school, a screen?
There's a screen available, so we'll, they, we've used one before, but we have a train here. Yeah, or, I mean, we'll, couple of those. Anything else?
Well, I would just suggest, I think the next step is for us to read what Sarah and Kelly have put together. Because that is a compilation of several, from several of Homier's ordinances. And you may want to just take that as our starting point, rather than what he has presented as his second grant. I have not read it yet, but I am just very, what I thought Homier would do is do exactly what Sarah and Kelly did. And for some reason, he hasn't done that. You know, whether it's maybe as Sarah did, he's only concentrating on what he feels he has to be done and cornered, believing everything else to us, I don't know. I wish he would explain it. But I sense your frustration as well as ours. Thank you.
I am going to say, if I may, I really thought tonight was really, actually, a whole lot better, more interactive. I felt like there was some cohesiveness, with the exception of, sorry, Mr. Kurt. And no one wants to have to have those difficult conversations and comments, but I do appreciate the atmosphere is different with the planning commission. I haven't been here in a couple of meetings because I have other career duties and things, but I do think it's better and it's noticeable, so I just wanted to mention that.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:50.
So moved.
Motion, I, Dave Clitt, support, I adjourn at 8:50. Motion, I, Dave Witt, support Raj J. Finally, adjourn at 8:50. Any discussion?